Good afternoon, everyone. Today is January 9, 2024. This is a City of Prescott City Council Study Session. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good. Mayor Protem Cantalme.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
Here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Will you read the first item on our Agenda Discussion Presentation today?
Yes, Mayor. First up, we have a discussion and presentation regarding an overview of the city's Community Development Department.
Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director, and it is my pleasure to kick this presentation off for the Community Development Department. Today, we're going to review our department mission, our overview, organizational structure and staffing. We'll dive into a little bit about our budget for FY24, some accomplishments, as well as goals and objectives. Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Green, our Chief Building Official for the Building Safety Division, and Mr. Warley, our Planning Manager for the Planning Division. So our department mission is to provide friendly and professional development services to those who live and work in Prescott. We help our customers get through the necessary processes within Prescott by having open communication, being available for questions, and making the process less daunting. Our areas of responsibility include, on the left, community planning, and per our Land Development Code, that is overseen in part by our Board of Adjustment, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission. The next area of responsibility, long-range planning, and right now, we have that going on with our General Plan Update for 2025, and our General Plan Ad hoc Committee oversees part of that process. Historic preservation is the next item of responsibility, and that is also overseen in part by Prescott Preservation Commission. In addition to those Planning Division areas of responsibility, we also have for building, plans examination, building inspection, and for Neighborhood Services, code compliance and vacation rental program facilitation. So this is our organizational structure for the department. We have 20 positions, one of which is new to the department but not new to the city. All of the modifications you'll note are on the left side of the organizational structure with the square boxes, and I'll walk you through those. So the operations manager position was reworked and came from the City Managers' Office. This was my previous position that I held with the City Managers' Office. And we reworked the position to include oversight for the Neighborhood Services Division, as well as operations for the department. This is also a position that will be over a new, but not new, position, a position that was repurposed from our Building Division. So we have an operations analyst that will provide oversight with various functions that were previously just done by everyone within the division. So all of these functions here, the SOPs, standard operating procedure, software oversight, records retention, staff development, all of those processes were previously done on the right side of the screen, if you will, on the right side of the structure, by all of our team members that were providing services that we provide to the public. So these functions that are internal to the department were just picked up as staff had the time and ability. So with this change, we felt it was a positive movement to increase efficiencies, having all of those internal operations under one member or the operations manager, as well as the analyst, having direct oversight of those functions. So again, this isn't an addition to staffing, just a reorganization. So a little bit about our department budget. Within the city's overall general fund, community development takes about 1.3 of those operating expenditures from the general fund. And that looks like, as far as operating is concerned, about 2.2 million. With some capital grant monies, the total comes to about 3 million. Most of that is spent for salaries and benefits. What that looks like as far as funding sources is concerned, and I apologize, it's a little hard to read, but the large orange Pac-Man shape of the pie there is a 74% program revenue. So that means our department recovers the cost in our operating budget up to 74%, which means the 24% is what we have coming out of the general fund tax base. So I'll be speaking to that also in a moment when we talk about goals and objectives. Next up, I wanted to touch on some department accomplishments. This is for the Planning Division. The Planning Division processed 257 project applications, and those include our pre-application conference, re-zones, final preliminary plaits, et cetera. And there were 24 agenda items presented to council, 18 to Planning and Zoning, 10 to Preservation Commission, and 8 to the Board of Adjustments for the entirety of fiscal year '23. Here's a few pictures from our General Plan Open House. It was very successful in August of this past year. Roughly 200 people came to attend that meeting, and that is also one of our accomplishments for this past year. And there is Ms. Tammy Dewett on the left and Kaylee Munias on the right, as they often present to council. And between them is a table that captures our fiscal year '24 as of, you know, the halfway mark, and we're about half of what we'd expect to see. So 120 project applications, 13 items presented to council, nine to Planning and Zoning, six to Preservation, and six to Board of Adjustments.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, I had a question, going back to that slide where you showed the organizational structure. You don't have to go all the way back to it.
Oh, okay.
But I know that we authorized a code compliance officer or a hearing officer. Is that going to be part of your organizational structure, or is that going to be in legal's organizational structure?
So the oversight of that position will be legal, although our Land Development Code and city code provides that the Community Development Director appoints that position. But as far as the day-to-day oversight and, you know, making sure they're doing what they need to do, that'll come from legal.
Okay. And then, do you have any update on where we stand with that process?
Yes, the position was actually posted, and I've had several very good conversations with interested applicants, which I know two of which are going to apply. One is on the fence about applying, and then there is another that is also thinking about it, so.
So do you have a timeline for when you think that person might be in seat?
Yes, sir. I would hope that they would be in office or functioning as of February at some point.
Excellent. The reason is, I talk to a lot of people who complain about code violations out there in the community with their neighbors or with various things, and I know that kind of what I've tried to do when I talk to those folks is educate them on the idea of, I know that the process is not as expeditious as you would like now, but I'm very excited to tell you that we do have a hearing officer slated to come in and that I think that will expedite the process a little bit more quickly than going through the city court, where legal has kind of educated me that that's not the highest and biggest priority for city court. So this will give a little bit more authority to actually get some code compliance going forward. And I know there's other opportunities, too, I kind of share with people in the public, like what you may perceive as a code violation may not in fact rise to the standard of what a code violation is according to our code compliance officer. So, you know, but I'm happy to hear that February. That gives me more information to go back to some of my frequent people who visit me and talk to me about it, so I appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you for the question. Okay, moving forward to other department accomplishments, plan reviews. So this is total plan reviews, this 10,562. This includes every time a submittal is touched. So if a completeness check, when a submittal first comes in, it goes through a short completeness check. It gets reviewed by multiple people within the department. This is only community development, but it includes that completeness check, it includes planning and zoning, building, as well as historic, everything. So as of the close of the fiscal year for '23, our team processed plans and touched plans 10,562 times, and we have a 78% meet or exceeding the due date. Now, 78% doesn't mean that we're C-average students. As opposed to the private industry, we cannot turn work away. Whenever a new project comes in, we have to accept it, and depending on the volume, and we have very seasonal fluctuations, we just have to get to them as we can. And we don't upstaff during those swells because they do only last so long. And we did see that in this past year, this calendar year as it closed, we did see a drop-off in permits, and Ryan will talk to that when he speaks about the Building Division.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thanks, Chelsea. You began touching on exactly what I was trying to understand is, you know, what's the trends of results in this space? What's the goal you have? You know, what do you think is good? You said 78 is not a C. So, and then do we really understand the gaps to get to perfection?
Perfection is a funny word in the building industry, and I'm sure other industries, too. But as far as meeting or exceeding due dates, I mean, we always strive to meet or exceed. Our due dates, and we can touch on this a little bit later, but there are different shoots for different project scopes. So commercial does not receive their permit at the same time as a residential would. But I would say that as far as how we're looking, I feel 78% is actually pretty good. Because of the seasonal fluctuations and because we cannot choose when projects come in, they tend to all come at the same time. And so I would say we always strive for the 80% to 85% range, just to make sure that we're, you know, always striving for better. But I am not displeased in the 78%. But with the change in our organizational structure and having eyeballs on, you know, all of these functions and processes and helping watch trends, being the responsibility of one or two people rather than everybody trying to catch it, I feel we're going to be able to make some positive impacts, in particular this year. So I'm excited to see that number and where it goes. Thank you for the question.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Thank you, Chelsea. I have a question. The City Council has approved funding to fast-track plan reviews for our mass production builders. And the plan was that way we would free up time for our local custom, single-family home builders. And I've still gotten feedback, I'd just like to respectfully say, that they still take some three or four months to get a single-family home through the planning process, even though we've approved software and online. And so I was just going to ask you, is there any hope, any move to get that time down for our local builders, who are a very important part of our community?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, and I would encourage those builders to reach out to us if there's a particular concern. I know that what you're referring to is the mass-graded subdivision model plan permits. So for mass-graded subdivisions, they are able to not have to do certain things in light of them being mass-graded. Typically, they don't require sprinklers, so there's not an extra fire plan review, which extends the time. Typically, they don't need a whole lot of public works review because they're mass-graded, so no grading. And when you add those review elements back in, it tends to elongate the process only because now you have two other review disciplines looking, making plan review comments, et cetera. So I would encourage those folks to reach out to us because we are always willing to partner and have a conversation about how can we do this better. We strive for excellence, and if there are ways that we can do better, we will. But right now, you asked the question, is there anything else we can do at this present time? Unfortunately, with custom builds, it is so scope-specific and lot-specific. All of our infill lots in Prescott can be very difficult to build. So it really is geographically specific, you know, where are you going? What community are you going into? What's the grade of the lot, et cetera? So it kind of varies on a case-by-case. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. In talking about the plan review process, Chelsea, I'm curious. I know, I think it was last year, maybe the beginning of last year, you guys started a process where you would kind of pause normal office operations, I think, is it on Wednesday?
Plan Review Wednesday.
Yeah, Plan Review Wednesday, and I understand this process came from the county to something similar, or is that a thought? I was just curious, has that made an impact on some of these numbers you're seeing in plan review? Has it been, because I know it was kind of the idea was you were piloting it. I imagine it's continuing because you've seen some success, but I'm just curious if you could talk to that a little bit more.
Absolutely. So Plan Review Wednesday started last April, I'm sorry, this past April in '23. I don't feel it's been long enough for us to really have tracked the trend, and Ryan's going to go over it when he speaks to trends in plan review and permit submittals. But we saw a seasonal fluctuation in projects to which we haven't seen in the last, like, three or four years. So when COVID happened, everything was kind of out the window as far as trends because we got a swell of permits. So last year, we actually saw a dip in permits, which, you know, it's difficult for me to say how effective Plan Review Wednesday was because we saw a decline in some volume. I would like to get you a better answer, but maybe after this next couple of seasons transpire.
That makes sense. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, I had a question as it pertains to the customs. There was also a time, I think, when you were at your maximum, trying to keep up with all the permits required. Didn't you guys subcontract out to a company that, do you still do that?
We do not. We did that, I want to say, in 2021, '22. Yeah, '21 and '22, definitely. With Mr. Ryan Green coming on board and some efficiencies he built into the department, we felt it wasn't necessary to do that any longer. And since then, since that contract lapsed and he's got his team, you know, working full speed ahead, we've seen that we're meeting or exceeding those same turnaround times.
Let me ask you this. I had a custom home builder talk to me about this a few weeks ago. Do you ever foresee a time if a custom home builder came in with a plan and you couldn't meet the deadline, could they independently pay for an outside firm to do the plan review and then give you the report?
So Mr. Green is going to speak to a new initiative that he's piloting with commercial plans because that's the most, that's the heaviest workload for us. I would imagine that if this new program is successful, we may go into that realm. But the idea behind what he'll describe to you is to further pull the load off of our plans examiners so that they can focus more on those commercial plan reviews because I, I'm sorry, for those custom residential plan reviews. Because a commercial plan review can be anywhere from, you know, 10 hours to 40 hours, depending on what they're looking at. So if that's taken out of the queue, the idea is that it'll lighten the load for everything else. But to your question, I would imagine that if this new initiative is very, very successful, we may expand it in the future.
Yeah, there was an incident here with a large custom that the, I can't remember how it all went, but basically because of the delay, they weren't able to meet the terms, and therefore they ended up losing the contract because they couldn't get the permit out quick enough before the, I guess it was the weather was changing, and they had a deadline to be able to get this thing up and dried in. And so that's what they were wondering, how can they prevent this going forward where these permits are issued right before winter, when it's difficult to try to, you know, get everything started when we've got snowstorms coming? So if they have an option of paying for it themselves and bringing it to you, maybe that's something that could happen in the future, but today, right now, that is not a possibility.
Correct. We don't have the system or program in place at this point in time.
No, I'm talking about to take it out, take it outside of the city for a plan review and bring you a stamped engineer's report and get it ready for permitting.
Correct. We don't have that initiative in place for custom residential permits at this time.
Okay, but possibly in the future.
I'd say it really depends on how this program works for the commercial, but if it's successful and we have a good flow, absolutely, we'd look into it.
You know, as a builder myself, I think that that would be a great thing to offer because in the construction business, time is money.
Yeah.
And when you're delayed, you know, a whole season, that's a big delay for a lot of people, for various reasons. But if they had the option of paying for it on their own and producing it ready for a permit, that would not only help them, but would help your department as well.
Sure.
Take some of the burden off of you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So plan review. We talked about fiscal year '23, back to '24, we're about half, so we're tracking about the half-year mark here with 53,000 and change plan reviews performed and still at that 78% reviewed measure. So some additional accomplishments for permits. 189 new single-family permits issued as of the end of fiscal year '23. Now, I have the average days there for you on each of these categories, but the 70 days from application to issuance, this is not typical for our model home site permits, which we were discussing here the past couple of minutes. This is primarily for our custom home builds and other production homes on those more difficult sites. We had 23 new commercial permits issued, and their average days came out to about 191 from application to issuance. And, you know, these are larger scopes, these are bigger design teams, typically with multiple firms doing parts of the plan, so a lot of coordination. And that average day is not high by any means. We had 76 commercial TI permits issued. TI is tenant improvement, think of it as a commercial remodel. And those scopes vary so drastically that we didn't calculate average days. And then the last column there, we had 97,031 total field inspections performed for all the permit types. And what's extraordinary about that number is that we have only three inspectors pictured here. From left to right, we have Mr. Andrew Rogers, Mr. Bill Woods, and Mr. Dave Prizer, who I'm sure are squirming a little bit behind me, or ducking. For permit information for fiscal year '24 thus far, 89 new single-family permits issued, 12 new commercial permits issued, 44 commercial TIs, and about 4,700 total field inspections. So some department goals for you. We have, and I'm going to run through these fairly quickly so I can have time for our team here. Customer support services, and an objective behind that is coordinate in-person trainings with customers as needed. Those have been successful in the past, and we would love to continue that program. Community outreach and education. We've been kicking around the idea of an educational social media campaign, Why Permits, kind of educating the public as to why they're good for you, why they're good when you go to sell your home, or why they're good when you're going to buy a new home, and what kinds of things need permits. We want to do staff training and development. ASBO, which is the Arizona Chapter for the Building Official Association, is coming to, I believe, Prescott. I know Northern Arizona, but they're coming in the spring, so we're going to look forward to sending staff to that. Department community volunteer opportunities. Pictured in the center there is Ms. Wendy Starr. She did, she coordinated a toy drive, her and Tander, for the department, and there she's pictured dropping off our donations to the CASA for Kids. And then also on our goals list, we have assess fee structure for greater cost recovery opportunities. So we're going to perform a fee study that takes all of our fees to make sure that, are we billing appropriately for our services and capturing as much as we can as far as those permit fees and project plan review fees? And then an objective behind that also would absolutely be to work with our industry partners if there is any potential fee changes. Now, how we're doing as far as your goals. The 2023 Council Strategic Plan laid out several goals, and I'll run through these fairly quickly. Goal number one was maintain a stable general fund. And this year, we're going to help with that by doing our own fee study and making sure that we're recovering costs as much as we can. Goal two, economic development. We frequently partner with our friends in economic development to make sure that new businesses coming in have all of the information they need to move in successfully to Prescott. Goal number three, airport. We always liaison with the airport team and ensure projects around there are in compliance with adopted codes and other requirements. Goal number four, quality of life. We're assisting the Workforce Housing Committee in their goals and furthering their goals and updating our own general plan to capture quality of life opportunities. And last goal on this page, goal number five, service-oriented culture. We have worked diligently to build good relationships with our community partners, whether they be resident customers as well as our building industry partners. Mr. Ryan Green is going to speak to his third-party Mr. Ryan Green is going to speak to his third-party plan review initiative as well as his monthly coffee with YCCA. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Green unless Council has any questions for me.
Councilwoman Fullworth.
Hi, Chelsea. Just one question on your goal number one. When you talk about looking at the fee structure, what's your objective at this point in terms of when you'd come to council, when this might be effective? Are we looking mid-year, end-of-year? What are you thinking?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. This would be conducted in concert with our fiscal year '25 budget cycle. So any changes, we would see implemented within that budget so that you're not having to make changes out of budget year cycle. We would create a fee resolution that would be appropriately timed to make sure that the fees begin July 1 of '24 for the FY '25 budget year. That's the goal, anyway.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question. I remember, I think it was back in 2019, there was a move to standardize all the general engineering standards. For example, you know, an electrician or a plumber, they cover the Quad City area and they'll be in Prescott one day and then in the county the other day. And it was to standardize all the requirements. How was that worked out?
Well, the general engineering standards are overseen by the Public Works Department. I know that they are working on an update to them and I believe they do want to have that concerted effort between jurisdictions. I cannot provide an update. I'm not quite sure, but I know Gwen and her team is on top of that.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further questions for me, I will turn it over to Mr. Ryan Green, our chief building official.
I'm even sitting down and it's too tall. All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For those of you new to council or who haven't had a chance to meet me, my name is Ryan Green. I'm the building official for the City of Prescott. And I'm here today to talk a little bit about the Building Safety Division. Before I dive into this, I did want to expand a little more on Councilwoman Fullworth's question in regards to our plan review due dates and percentages of times that we've met or exceed. I think we need to look, when we're looking at plan review times, we're charged with two things. One, meeting the due date. But oddly enough, as the Building Division, we set the due date as well. So over the last two and a half, three years that I've been here, we've been working diligently on shortening our review times. So for example, right now, our residential plan review for a single-family home is about four weeks. Three years ago, it was six weeks. So when we look at that percentage of time met, we don't necessarily always want it to be at 100 because we want to be right up to that line of we're doing this plan as quickly as we can. So we could set our time for, oh, well, it's going to be seven weeks to do a residential home. But we can get them done in four weeks at 78%, opposed to we can get them done in eight weeks at 100% met the due date at all times. So it's two variables that we want to come in right together where we're being able to set our due dates as low as we can as well as meet them as often as we can. So that's some of the reason why you see that. We like to set it right around 78 or 80 because it shows us we're pushing ourselves as a department to make sure we get those plans out quicker.
Thank you. Helpful context.
Thank you. So jumping right into this, the Building Division is set up into three different sections. We have our intake and processing team. They're responsible for intaking the permits and processing them through. We've got Jacob Lund, Kelly McGivern, Margaret Ferrier, and myself. Some of them are in the audience today. Thank you for being here. We have our Building Plan Review Team made up of Laurel Collins, Scott Adams, and Don Mosher. They're responsible for reviewing plans. And then our Inspection Team, who Chelsea so kindly introduced a little bit earlier. When looking at this diagram, I really wish I could have made it look more like a Venn diagram because these distinct groups, we work very closely together. A lot of what we do overlap. When looking at a Building Division, I'd like to picture a four-by-four medley-team relay race. There's a lot of baton passing that goes on, and that is where we like to live and figure out how to make it more efficient. So we're also responsible for four functions. We have our permitting, who's responsible for the intake and issuance of all permits. Our plan review team, who reviews plan submittals for code compliance. Our inspection team, who looks at the built project for compliance. And then the enforcement aspect of this, where we're responding to citizens' inquiries regarding new and existing code-related violations. Oh, I did it. I knew I was going to do it. So this diagram kind of breaks down our level of work and volume. These are numbers that are taken from the last three years and they're averaged. We average about 12,000 inspections a year. To put that into perspective, we do about 10 to 12 inspections for a new single-family home. Plan review, we have 2,700 performed annually. We're doing about 1,900 permits a year, and we have anywhere from 25 to 30 cases, building code cases posted annually. So breaking down into the separate divisions, if you will, the first one is permitting or our customer service. And their main function is to manage the interactions at the front counter. We're still a front-facing department. We have a lot of traffic at our front counter and our front-counter staff does a great job of making sure everybody gets good services when they come in and have a good time, I guess, as much good time as you can have at a permitting counter. They also act as the department's air traffic control. As you can see from the previous slides, Chelsea said that we had 10,000 plan reviews and buildings only doing about 2,900 of them. So there's a lot of communication that goes back and forth between individual reviewers within the department as well as reviewers from other departments such as Public Works and Fire and those entities that we work closely with. And our permitting team is responsible for making sure everybody's going in the right Our plan review team, obviously, we review plans for code compliance, but more importantly, we work with the building inspectors to resolve field-related code issues. I spoke a little bit about the baton passing. In a building process, the major and most important passing of the baton is from when it leaves the permitting office or the engineer's office or the architect's office to go out to the field to be built with the inspection staff and the construction personnel. That process requires a lot of working together and communication to make sure that whatever was identified at the plan review stage as being a possible issue or hurdle with the project gets relayed to our inspection staff as well as our construction personnel. We also work with other departments, industry partners, and the governing body to implement new building code adoptions. We do adopt the ICC code every six years, or better yet, this governing body adopts the ICC code cycle every six years. ICC issues a new code every three. However, industry standard across the state and country is to adopt every other code cycle just because it's very hard to learn a new code and then in three years turn around and adopt a new one. So we typically will skip that year.
Mayor Proten, we had a question.
I do. Brian, thank you for that. Going back to what you were talking about, the inspectors, did I read somewhere, or maybe I talked to you, George, about it, are you allowing like a FaceTime inspection now where you've got an inspection that's required and inspector doesn't make it out, but the contractor can either video or take a picture and send it to somebody? Is that adopted yet?
Currently, right now, we do not utilize a Skype or Teams method inspection and mainly because over the last two and a half years, we've been able to cover our inspection schedules very well. And obviously, we would prefer to be there in person, not only for the customer, but to see the project. And we do same-day inspections. If you call in today, you'll get your inspection tomorrow. We offer after-hour inspections as well as weekend inspections. So we haven't had much of a response from the industry seeking that Skype inspection yet. But obviously, if that issue comes up in the future, it's not something that we wouldn't want to explore and see if we can provide some support in that aspect.
Is that being used right now in the county?
It is being used in the county. It's very, very popular in counties, mostly because just the demographics of things, you've got four inspections to do and there's an hour of drive time in between. Luckily, with our three inspectors, we've split the city up into thirds, so they're spending their time in one area of the city and we found that that's been quite efficient in making sure our inspections get performed.
I'd love to actually have you or somebody in your department, maybe in about a year or two after they've used it for, I can't remember if it just went into effect, I remember reading it somewhere, but check in with them and see how well it's working.
Absolutely.
Especially for like epoxy inspections where you've got to stand around with a crew of people waiting for the inspector to show up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to the inspection group. Involved in inspecting, the process involves examining the building structural, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, roofing, and site characteristics. I chose to read that whole bullet specifically regarding how we did inspections 10 or 15 years ago. You used to see individual trade inspectors. You had an electrical inspector, a plumbing inspector, mechanical inspector, and each inspector would have to come out for each different type of inspection. In the late, I guess you could call it 2000s, early 2010s, we moved more into combination inspectors where one inspector looks at all the trades just for the benefit of, you don't have four different people performing one inspection. All of our inspectors right now are multiple trade inspectors, so they look at everything when we go out. It's just one inspector.
Councilmember Rusing, you had a question.
Oh, I would just like to make a statement, how important these inspections are for public safety and to prevent fires and bodily damage. We've all heard of buildings in like third-world countries that just collapse because they weren't properly built. And then recently, there was that condo in Florida that just imploded. So I just want to thank you for keeping the public safe and enforcing these codes.
Well, thank you. And Councilmember Rusing, you are absolutely right. And I think the inspection portion of this is where we really get to utilize that facet of it and enjoy the fact that we're keeping buildings safe. All of the plan review and permitting and meetings and PAC meetings all lead up to the fact of we're wanting to provide a good product for our constituents and be able to walk in and out of buildings and feel safe. And our last area of responsibility would be the enforcement aspect. We currently do not have a team for this portion of work. We kind of all share responsibilities. Part of the reason in being is enforcement programs are very hard in getting cost recovery. And because we are mostly a cost-recovery department, we do share these responsibilities, but we are very vigilant of it and continue to work on this. We respond to citizens' inquiry regarding possible building code violations. And then we enforce the codes through the court or the hearing officer when voluntary efforts are unproductive or obviously it's a threat to health or life safety. I'd like to back up and say when I make this statement, we're working on this. That is in regards to the hearing officer continuing to evaluate the different functions of how we enforce codes throughout town and to look at some other maintenance codes and things of that nature that can further help us in the enforcement of this, similar to the presentation I gave a couple of months ago and looking at the property maintenance codes and things like that. We continue to look at and refine this process.
Yeah, Ryan, that's come to my attention on a number of building projects where inspectors come out and tell the builder that they're violating certain codes and they're instructed to correct those. And then the builder disregards it, ignores it, and continues to build and develop the property. And sometimes a reinspection now is unable to determine whether the corrections had been made. So there are certain builders that just seem to disregard those, what can potentially be serious violations. And there just doesn't seem to be a way to enforce them and penalize them. So do you think that with this new hearing officer, we're finally going to get to a point where some of those people that are operating less than ethically will start to feel the pain and maybe decide that it's more beneficial to go ahead and make the corrections?
I most certainly think that the hearing officer process will help on that issue that we're speaking about, mainly in regards to when it comes to building code cases, a lot of time, time is an issue. How quickly can we get out there? How quickly can we inspect these items? How quickly can the builder respond? And a lot of times, it would help to have somebody oversee and facilitate that process.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yeah, just one more question. Recently, we've been discussing business licenses. Do you think requiring a business license would help unethical builders and subs? If we could pull the license if they don't comply, do you think that would help things?
That's more of ROC, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know if I could quite speak to the business license portion of it. However, I would like to see maybe some more in maintenance inspections where we're walking through and just checking the overall safety of the building. We actually have quite a few people that will, or applicants, homeowners, that will call in and request that we come out and take a look at a building to see if there's any violations or building code issues or things like that. So I think stepping up, being more vigilant in the community and offering it as more of an educational service instead of, ah, the building department's going to come look at all my code items. We're there to help and we want them fixed just as much as everybody else or more so.
Mayor Proten.
But Ryan, just to clarify, you don't, when you find a code violation, and this is just maybe for Kathy to hear too, and this is the way it's always been, they're not allowed to cover the work up until the code violation has been inspected, that it's been fixed.
Correct.
Yeah, so you don't let them cover up and move forward and then hope for a good result?
No. In that situation, if we were scheduled for an inspection and we went out and we found items that weren't compliant, we would not approve the inspection. And then request that they call the inspection back in for us to look at it. If for whatever reason, something had been covered up or a concrete foundation had been poured where either, you know, myself or one of the inspectors hasn't seen it, that material would need to be removed, even if it was a slab or a foundation. We've had issues before where slabs have been poured without inspections. We'll have that applicant x-ray the slab to determine that all of the rebar is in there. So no, we don't permit proceeding pass inspections without us getting eyes on what needs to be corrected.
Number one, do you accept pictures in that case? If they've got a load of concrete coming and you don't get there, would you accept a picture from the contractor?
We've accepted pictures and we do in special cases. For example, we had one the other day where the inspector had gone out. Everything looked good. Everything was compliant. The rebar was where it needed to be, but the code requires that we have a special inspection performed as well. The special inspector hadn't been there. The response was, hey, before I result the inspection, just send me a picture of the report and we'll go from there. We try to work with builders when we're in those time constraints, especially right now with all of the concrete that's going down to I-17. Getting mud for projects is very difficult. Lead times are very, very far out, so we try to be as accommodating when we can.
And one last thing, how many stop-work violations did you have? Do you guys issue stop-work?
Yes.
And have you done a lot of that?
Those stop-work orders were reflected in our code enforcement cases. They're built into that, so they're part of that 25 average a year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've got some graphs here. I'm going to just kind of run through real quick for the sake of time. These two graphs before you are our total fiscal year permits issued over the last 10 or, I'm sorry, the last 20-plus year increments. They're shown in increments of five years. This is total permits issued on the top and total single-family residents issued on the bottom. As you can see, right before 2008, we were pushing some pretty heavy numbers, had the dip, it kind of spiked back up again in COVID. And now you can see currently, we're kind of cooling down to where's more of a normal number for Prescott. This is our last five years of permit issued, which kind of show the COVID trends. And I mention that just because a lot of businesses and other entities struggled with the COVID-19 response. I will say that nationwide, construction didn't miss a beat. I will say that nationwide, construction didn't miss a beat. We actually did more during COVID years than we're currently doing now. This is a last five years for commercial permits issued. These are new commercial buildings from the ground up. Those are shown in orange on the top, and then the bottom is shown our multifamily units, and the front number is how many actual buildings have been built, and then the back number is how many units have been provided. So in 2020, we built six apartment-like apartment buildings and have 30 units. This graph is just an example that Comdev, we watch national trends as well, just to kind of see where we're at. These are all numbers taken from similar jurisdictions across the US. We've got Loveland, Milton, Georgia, Bastrop, Texas, and Prescott. As you can see in the graphs, all jurisdictions had a little bit of a spike during COVID and are starting to cool back down. And then this is a look of our permits issued regionally, separated into Prescott, Yavapai County, and Prescott Valley. Again, just a trend that we watch and keep an eye on. Accomplishments, we have implemented a third-party planner view program. I'm super excited about this program. It allows commercial projects to select from a list of third-party entities that we've met with and vetted ourselves, and they are listed on a list that the applicant can choose. And then that entire process is handled between the applicant and the third-party company, which allows essentially no overhead for the city. It's all handled between the applicant and the third-party planner view party. We've implemented a series of coffee with contractors. We meet monthly, or try to meet monthly, at the YCCA, just to talk about common things that are coming up, how to shorten planner view times. I feel like our best advocate and our best helper in setting these standards is our industry partners, so we try to utilize that meeting to do so. We've created and implemented new submittal checklist, they're all on the website. We really tried to distill it down to make it a little more palatable for all applicants within the city. We have to remind ourselves that not everybody that pulls a permit is a contractor. We have a lot of homeowners as well, and we want to make sure that they fully understand our process. We've implemented a fast-track permit process for small projects. These are mostly residential projects, your water heaters, your furnaces, things that take just one inspection, not a whole lot of planner view, so we can essentially issue that permit over the counter and get things installed. And then we've revamped the permit by inspection process for our small commercial projects to essentially negate the requirement for planner view on those. And then just here at the end, I'm going to go through these pretty quickly, our division goals and objectives. We'd like to seek to increase the level of proactive outreach to our contractors, design professionals, and other applicants. Seek to provide staff training on common review items and the use of consistent checklists to reduce planner view timeframes. There is only one thing more I hear of in the community other than planner view times, and it's planner view consistency. People want the same comments, no matter who's reviewing the plans. So we strive very hard to stick to our checklist and be consistent with our reviews, and seek to educate the public regarding minimum health and life safety requirements through public outreach, and then finally, to further pursue training opportunities to aid staff receiving building code certifications. And with that, unless there's any questions for me, I will pass the baton on to Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm going to run through most of my slides relatively fast, because a lot of this you've heard before. Neighborhood Services is covered pretty significantly during our review process. I believe it was August, we presented on code enforcement, and Neighborhood Services was key to that. The division is made up of Tander Hill, Wendy Starr, both in the front row up here, I think. Tander's hiding behind the column. They've been very effective at working with property owners to try to educate them about codes. It's one thing to penalize someone for violating it, it's much more effective if you can inform them, explain why a code's important, they will self-enforce in those cases, and we don't have to get involved in the process. We've been working with residents, we've been working with volunteer groups to try to make sure that if a resident has a violation and they are unable physically or financially to take care of that problem, that we can actually refer them to organizations that will help them. So we're not just mean enforcers, we're actually assisting them in finding the help they need in order to bring their properties into compliance. One of the things that we've started doing, we just did it this past Saturday, is to have a presence at the farmer's market as a means of getting information out to the public. A lot of people stopped by and asked questions, and we gave away some prizes as part of that process that helped educate them about our code enforcement. One of the last steps in any code enforcement process is to take someone through court or to a hearing officer, but as you've already heard, the hearing officer coming online will make that process much faster. We could, in theory, take someone from a situation where they're not complying or not cooperating with us to the hearing officer in less than 30 days. That's something that we just haven't had in the last five years with court processes for those cases.
Councilmember Rusing?
George, I just wanted to comment, I've heard that the hearing officer will have hearings here in council chambers rather than tie up the court rooms.
That is our intention, is to use existing city facilities, this room being a preference just because it's set up for public meetings. I do want to walk through some of the other goals and objectives real quick. One of the things that we're working on constantly is efficiency. How fast can we take a complaint, verify whether it is a violation, and then process it? So that's something that's being worked on. Again, the hearing officer being on board will speed that process up pretty fast. We have a very good electronic complaint system. Complaints are verified in the field on a tablet, that tablet lets us take pictures, attach everything to a code case, and then proceed from there. So we very rarely deal with paper any longer in the process, it's all electronic. We try to gain compliance cooperatively. We don't want to drag someone through a court process or a hearing officer process if we can get them to comply. Obviously, there are certain circumstances where life safety or the health of a neighborhood is in question, we will pursue harsher processes when necessary to mitigate those. So I want to talk a little bit about our planning division. We call them divisions formally in our process, but generally, we refer to each other as teams, so the planning team. Planning team is made up of Cami DeWitt, who you see in here fairly often presenting projects to you, Sarah Hilton, who you rarely see in here, but Sarah's the administrative glue that holds everything together. And if you have ever been in the military, you know that officers think they're in charge, and sergeants know they're in charge. Michael McGinnis, our CDBG coordinator, will talk to you about our CDBG program in just a moment. Kaylee Nunez is both a planner and a historic preservation specialist, and she will also be up here shortly talking about historic preservation in Prescott. I'm going to skip that slide, way too many words. The planning team deals with planning at three different levels. Long-range planning is generally something at a very high level, community planning is at a local level, and then zoning is the actual implementation of those planning projects. Long-range planning is typically a general plan or a specific area plan. Specific area plans are geographically limited to somewhat smaller areas than the whole city. There are several of those. The one you hear the most about, just because it's the most active, is the airport-specific area plan because of the activities, growth activities up there. Community planning is more at a local level, this is neighborhood plans, this is plans within a particular area that's dealing with growth pressures or development pressures around the periphery of that area, and we work with them to try to make sure that we can assist neighbors in protecting their neighborhood characteristics, the cohesion that exists within certain areas of town. And zoning is the implementation level. Most of you are familiar with our zoning code and the zoning districts that are created, those things are part of our bread and butter. The planner view that we do for any development projects is typically associated with zoning compliance for those projects. Just a few quick facts, because there's a lot of information floating around that may not be based on actual data. I've taken this data from various census numbers that we have from 2000, 2010, and 2020. Our population has been growing on average at 1.5% per year since 2000. Prior to that, it was closer to 2%, but just under. We've grown by 21.6% since 2000 in area by annexations, but if you were to divide that by 22 years, it's about the same rate of growth as the population growth. Population density is something else that's interesting. A lot of people think we're very urban. We've grown from 917 persons per square mile in 2000 to a little over 1,015 persons per square mile in 2020, which puts us at about half the average urban density in the United States. So we're still a relatively light urban area and much more suburban. And then our population certainly has been aging over time. We see that in the median age going from 47.8 in 2000 to 60.5 in 2020. I'm not going to go through all of the goals listed here, these are things that we talk to you about regularly with all of our projects when we come before you, so timely planner view is something that Chelsea touched on. All of the rest of these tie in very well with what Chelsea talked about, as well as what Ryan talked about. And I could have given you a quote from some high-level planning writer, but honestly, if you know who Yogi Berra is, you'll understand. This is one of the most on-point-for-planning quotes of anything that he said. If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up someplace else. So we take it seriously to look at where we're going when we do planning. With that, I would like to hand it over to Michael McGinnis to talk to you about CDBG real quick, and then we'll finish up with historic preservation.
Thank you, George. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Michael McGinnis, I'm your CDBG coordinator, your community development block grant. Just going to take a quick moment to talk about the program. Basically, what we do, what I do, is manage the CDBG program for the city. This program is roughly about 235,000 to 245,000 a year, coming from HUD, from a federal program. We look at it as our federal tax dollars coming back to our local city here. And what's unique about this with CDBG with Prescott, and I've said it before here, that, you know, Prescott has this, this is something that Chino Valley doesn't have, this is something that Prescott Valley doesn't have, and Prescott does it, does it well, and it's an opportunity to really give back to the community, which I think is outstanding. This year is actually our 20th year of this program. So I got one more slide. Before I do that, what you see up there, those pictures are from, our big project of this year was at the Prescott Community Nature Center. I've mentioned it before, last time I came to council, it was making for an ADA trail out there, and that's the construction of it as it went through the summer. This is the, this is the ribbon cutting that happened, I believe, in August. It's a great trail, again, if you haven't been able to make it out there, I highly suggest it, it's right across the street from Granite Mountain Middle School, their parking lot, where you drop off your kids, it's right over there. Our program goals and strategies for CDBG is to assist the maximum number of Prescott residents in need. A big part of what I've tried to do, I'm going into, you know, finishing out one here with this program, is really expand our relationships with non-for-profits. And we're going into our application period right now, we are seeing a lot newer applicants apply, so looking forward to seeing what they bring. And finally, another big part of this program is our minor home repair program. Just finished the first year of it, we're going to continue the program. This is, you know, helping out, usually, it's been elderly folks that are on fixed income, and, you know, they're one water heater, you know, disaster away from being in a serious trouble. Through this program, we've been able to help those folks out, and looking forward to continuing that with the Prescott Chamber of Commerce Foundation in Sherry Heine. So with that, any questions for me? You'll see me twice through the year, so May will be the next time.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I think I'm going to ask you the same question I asked you last time.
Right.
How are we doing in the separation of the 240,000 going to block grant projects? You know, construction projects for the betterment of the community. It was, we talked about maybe a third, I think it even outlines that in the handbook. So do you know how much money we spent or what the percentage is of the 240,000 that we spent in a non-charity avenue?
Right, thanks for the question, Mayor Protem. So the breakdown in HUD really limits what we're able to do with this, to 70% needs to go to low to moderate income activities. Those projects, those activities are usually coming from, are driven by non-for-profits. So that's why it's heavy in that realm. So the actual breakdown is 15% goes to public service activities, like New Horizons Transportation Service, Meals for Wheels, stuff like that. 65% goes to construction projects that we've done in the past. Construction projects like this ADA trail that the city, that the city was part of, so...
But have the construction projects primarily been within or given to a 501, a charity?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you foresee a time that you'll be using any of that money for block grant or for block revitalization, neighborhood revitalization?
Absolutely, absolutely. I know we've done it in the past with, I believe, the Dexter neighborhood and sidewalks. I think it's, a lot of it is looking toward the future, working with Parks and Rec, Public Works, coming up with a project that we see would be a good idea to use this money. So yes, in the future, I see us going back to something like that.
Because I was, I was reading here that one of the goals is to strengthen, let me read that again here, strengthen the city's relationship with local nonprofits.
That's correct.
I served on that board, and I think that that has been very strengthened over the years. I'd like to see it actually, you know, a portion of that money go for, again, block grant for neighborhood revitalization.
Right.
If possible.
Right.
So, and I think we talked about that for-profit contractors can also be involved in this. I'd like to see some literature go out to the community on that too, if possible.
Okay.
I think that's a part where we're just not giving as much attention to it. I've been saying that for like 16 years, so...
Right, yes, yes. Again, my understanding, working with HUD, it's pretty limited with what they want you to do the money for, specifically, that 70% has to be for low to moderate income. Per HUD guidelines specifically.
Yeah.
And usually, that's where we see the non-for-profits, because the non-for-profits, the majority of the time, they're working in that realm. And the city does too, with, like the Dexter neighborhood is...
Yeah, and the Dexter project was a fabulous project, but I can't think of one before that or after that, so, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing?
NACOG is a clearinghouse for millions in federal funding, do you ever reach out to them?
We've had a little bit of contact with NACOG, but that is definitely someone in our network that looking for, in the future, to strengthen that relationship as well, as opportunities go, for sure.
All right, we're going to hand it over to Ms....
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, I have about three minutes, so here we go. Historic preservation, what we do, and by we, it's myself and the Preservation Commission. So primary objective is to manage and implement the Historic Preservation Master Plan for Prescott. So the plan has criteria for all 13 local and national districts in order to identify, manage, and protect unique qualities of each. So those, that master plan was written in 1998. We are currently... We are currently revising the master plan, and on the next slide, we're going to talk more about that. But, so the districts are created based upon the age of the buildings, defining design types, landscape, or a combination of these elements. Another thing that I do is serve as a resource to owners of historic properties to help them maintain or gain national register status. So, you know, we have specific local standards, and there are actually national standards that we can apply to make this happen. And then another part of the work is monitoring properties for delisting, because unfortunately that does happen to where, you know, historic structures are modified to the point where they don't meet the criteria. We try to avoid that. So, goals for 2024 boiled it down to three. So what we want to accomplish is to implement a public participation timeline and begin review of the 2025 Historic Preservation Master Plan Draft. I do have Kat Moody, the former preservation specialist, helping with that, with some grant assistance, so that will include identifying all stakeholders in the process, scheduling events and surveys in tandem with the general plan outreach, promotion on social media and via press, and then hopefully to assemble all input for incorporation into the update at end of year. Second goal, leverage resources to bring greater awareness to preservation in Prescott. I feel pretty happy about the progress I made on this just since I started last January. Really have a solid relationship with the state office. They actually came up yesterday, and I hosted them around the downtown area. We are going to have the 2024 State Preservation Conference in Prescott at the end of June. So that will be key for networking and creating, you know, stronger relationships, not only with the state, but with other jurisdictions. Also, the president of the AZ Preservation Foundation was up here yesterday. So also, I would like to create new materials for historic property owners to encourage and incentivize preservation and rehabilitation. Then goal three, develop five-year objectives for preservation in Prescott. So these are long-term, larger projects, one of them being re-indexing all historic properties in Prescott. There are over 800. A comprehensive index has not been done since the 80s and 90s, so we're well overdue. Also, to potentially create new districts to encompass newer eras. So, you know, when, when the indexing was done in the 90s, you know, the 50s, 60s weren't considered historic. I would like to, you know, move on to maybe do some, some mid-century modern districts, or even just one. And lastly, kind of thrown in, around an idea to create overlay districts to encourage investment in deteriorating commercial areas with historic buildings. And that is all I have. Thank you, and I gave you some photos as a treat. Here's a panorama of Prescott in 1891, 1936. And there's Doc Holliday. That picture was taken in Prescott.
Thank you.
Random, but.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Kaylee, I want to thank you for the great day yesterday. It was so fun, and I have to tell everybody that as long as I've been here in Prescott, I've been involved in historic preservation, and it's been really great. I've had a lot to do with SHIPO, State Historic Preservation, for 40 years, both in Phoenix area, in the Encanto area, and the Coronado. And it's been really great to watch Kaylee get really immersed into historic preservation and see somebody of Kaylee's age to actually love it, which is very rare. But just watching the, the contacts that were made yesterday and the sharing of information for five or six hours we were with them, it was great, great, because they, these people are usually the first ones, you know, on the site to be able to offer help. And I think that because of the city that we are, and the fact that the, that we were the first, the territory capital going back, we really do, we could own the history in this state. And I think it's been wonderful to see the community step up the last few years and value these bungalows and these beautiful Victorians in our historic area. And oh, by the way, it happens to be one of our main tourist attractions when people come up here. They don't come up here to see rows of stucco houses and big planned area development. They come up here to see our history. So in my area, where I live in that historic area, just even over the last 10 years, it's amazing how quickly the streets are regenerating. And as you know, we like taxpayers, so we want taxpayers to be in those places and preserve our history. It's very, very important. And Kaylee, you're going to be a big important part to this and revamping the Historic Preservation Department and getting the literature out there and the information. There's, there are dollars out there for people who want to step into that, the realm of owning a piece of history, and we want to promote that, understanding what it, what it does for Prescott at large. So thanks, Kaylee.
Wonderful. Thank you for those comments. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for having us today.
Well, thank you all for your presentation today. I think we learned a lot. We're looking forward to the improvements that will come during our fiscal year and our calendar year here. I'll echo a lot of things of what the Mayor Protem just said, having a really quality, well-maintained, and future historic preservation district, and making sure that we enforce it and keep it the attractive location. You know, we talk a lot about eco-development and ecotourism, but I think preserving our history here makes us quite unique, not only in the state, but in the country at large. I'm even, I've even heard from a couple of local historians about maybe putting together our version of a, of a Freedom Trail like they have in Boston, where we can have designated, maybe brass implants in the sidewalks where Big Nose Kate used to deal cards over at the Palace Saloon, maybe where Virgil Erp lived, maybe where he invested in the sawmill up near Thumb Butte. We could put all those things together and have not only the Chamber of Commerce mapping that some of the local people will take that map and look at these other places, but I think being able to say, well, Doc Holliday downed a bottle of Red Eye right here. Those kinds of things, I think, continue to be very attractive, not only for people in the state and the nation, but we get visitors from Eastern, Western Europe that want to be able to come here and see where, where did the Erps reside, and where did Doc Holliday live? Those things, I think we can take advantage of, and if we have a real focus on that, we'll continue to be able to maintain that historic connection with the city of Prescott. So thank all you, I thank all of you for today and your presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mayor, can I? Yeah, I want to just, real quickly, have, so one of the things, speaking about what the mayor was just talking about, one of the fun things we were brainstorming with some of the events that the Historic Preservation Conference would do, and, and Kaylee, remind everybody what it was about the whiskey. They were going to do like a whiskey walk or something and go to all the different?
Yeah, we would plan that for the evening, like do a whiskey flight thing, like, like a mini bar crawl, as well as a tour of, you know, the downtown area, just.
And have one shot in every historic bar.
Yeah, probably just one, you know? That'd be good, so people could stick around till the end, so.
I can see some volunteers in the audience right now.
I can see some DUIs.
Nope, that will begin Ubers.
Ubers. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a presentation and discussion regarding the 2024 Water Management Policy Proposals.
Thank you.
What do I got, Sarah?
Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, thanks. I got about 40 minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, why don't we take five minutes before we start the next study session topic? So right now, it's 2:16, we'll start at 2:20. Resume this presentation on water policy and review. Brian Ruiz, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and is this on? Oh. Okay. I can talk loud. Or wait.
Test, test.
Oh, there we go. Okay, alrighty. Okay, good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. I am Brian Reese, Water Resources and Environmental Services Manager for the city. Today, we have recommendations for the Mayor's Commission on Water Policy and Review. So, and I just need the presentation to come up. There we go, okay. So our agenda for today, we're going to have a quick overview of the Mayor's Commission on Water Policy Monitoring Review. We'll jump into the highlights, the changes from the 2022 Water Management Policy to the 20, to the 2024 policy, and then we'll go over some additional recommendations for the management of the city, city water supplies by the commission. So the Mayor's Commission on Water Policy Review and Monitoring was established back in May of 2022, consists of eight mayors, excuse me, eight members, and the membership is the mayor's term. So the purpose of the commission is the review and the monitoring of the city's updated water policy adopted in April 26, 2022. Commission roster, Chairman Jim Lamerson, Vice Chairman Bob Roker, members Gary Beverley, Michael Taylor, Pete Krupnick, Gillian Haley, and Gary Warb. And our staff liaison is Leslie Grace- And our staff liaison is Leslie Gracer and Mary Kay Weisen. And Council liaison is Mayor Good. I just want to take real quick opportunity to thank the commission on all their hard work over the last year and a half. It's been very, 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 very helpful to the city. So, Commission Overview. So, quarterly updates were provided to council during study sessions on the date shown here. Commission Overview findings were established on the commission meetings of October 17, 2023, and November 24, 2023. So, and they're going to be listed as follows. It is recommended that the city continue with the 2022 policy as more effective than the 2019 policy for managing finite water supplies. However, it should be, it should remove or correct any language that the city doesn't or can't actually act upon. Some policies don't have clear procedures for staff or the applicant, so they may need to be removed until such time procedures are in place and can be enforced fairly. We use this recommendation when going through the 2022 policy, reviewing each of the items one by one, and try to use that, try to use this as the basis for updating the policies in 2024. Commission's finding number two is basically the beginning, the process to develop a long-term water management plan. So, there's a lot of words on this slide, I'm not going to read them all, but basically a long-term water management plan that will look at various items like rain and storm water supplies, groundwater pumping, sustainability, et cetera, is a key for maintaining the city's water future. So, we're looking, so that was one of their recommendations. And then, third recommendation, developing procedures for the use of the Water Resource Management Model. So, establishing these procedures would go hand in hand with creating a long-term water management plan, and is one of the, is a recommendation from the commission. So, I'm going to, in the overview of, from the commission, they establish, it was established that the 2024 policy could be used as a bridging document to help the city through the path it's on right now with, currently, we are modifying our decision order through Arizona Department of Water Resources for our assured water supply. Currently, we are involved in completing an update to the general plan, and that this policy could use to bridge the gap as we're getting the information needed from those two plans that will help us further align our policies with the objectives of the city and its water supply. So, that's, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I just wanted to, you touched on one thing I had a question about, which is the decision order. I know that that's still pending review with Arizona Department of Water Resources. Is there an update on that at all, or do we have a timeline for when we expect to see an update?
Well, we have a, we've discussed our strategy for getting that back in. There's a couple of different parts that we're working on. Our consultant has, or is, I believe, just provided us with some updated information that we needed to continue the review and the processing of the application. So, we're going to be getting on that in the next week or two. We've made some progress towards how we're going to handle other aspects of the, and comment responses for other aspects of the, of the application. We've in-house talked about gearing up over the first half of this year in order to see if we can try to, try to have a, have the package completed on our end within like the March, April timeframe. What we'll have to do after that is we'll have to then get with our modeling consultant in order to take all the data that has been updated since the last, since the previous submittal, and we'll have to reestablish the ground modeling on that. That'll take a little bit more effort, but we're trying to see if we can get, you know, tentatively, it's hard to say how long the modeling efforts are going to take at this point, but it is.
Well, is there some infrastructure planning that we considered, that was considered as part of that amendment to the, the reapplication for the decision order, like as it relates to, you know, bigger water projects?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
So, my understanding was part of the holdup with the decision order was they had some concerns around our ability to access water, specifically in the Big Chino Water Ranch. And so, my understanding was that we're going to look at ways to kind of satisfy their concerns around that. And some of that would presumably be some planning around that. Have we, have we made any progress with that component of it?
Yeah, yes, exactly. We have made, we have made progress with that aspect of it. I think we have our strategy on how we're going to handle concerns on Big Chino Water Ranch at this point in time. There's, there was other aspects of the application that still needed to be addressed also in terms of how we're handling various aspects of our portfolio. And we have a consultant onboard who is, who looked at various alternatives and scenarios for us, and have gotten those back to us just after the new year. And we need to, we need to do an internal review on those at this point in time, and make sure that we're happy with the assumptions that he's made and the conclusions that he's drawn.
Thank you.
So, so again, we're looking at, at the 2024 document as being, as a bridge document over approximately a two-year timeframe that we're hoping will coincide with the completion of our DNO and the completion of our general plan, and well underway in establishing a long-term water management plan. Here's some, just a summary of some, some basic things that have changed in the 2024 policy. I'm not going to go through all of these. I'd say that the, I wanted to say that the update to the maps, charts, and figures, there was none, no new ones included, just information was updated so that it was up to date. We tried to provide more in-depth discussion on the WORM, the Water Resource Management Model, and update the section on conservation to make sure it included our new rebate website page. And the update to the water application guidelines is where we're going to start off here first. So, the previous water policy had 22 policy items in it. We've renamed these Water Application Guideline changes, and they've been reduced to 18. So, we're going to go over these very quickly because we're short on time. I'm going to try to just concentrate on the big changes that have happened at this point. So, for policy, for item number one, the issue that we had with this is that, that the previous policy had, had it tied to a formal site plan review. And as you can see, we've added language in yellow here to review and change this around so that it could be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission for a site plan when a site plan is applicable to that, to that application. However, if it doesn't need to go to Planning and Zoning or Board of Adjustments based on the Land Development Code, then the Water Service Application package would include a basic site plan if it has exterior improvements, or a basic floor plan if only interior improvements. And what that would do is that would, you know, sever the tie between having to go through those processes that don't apply. Planning and zoning, a lot of times, would see a site plan come in, and they would be confused on why they're reviewing a site plan that doesn't have any aspects of planning and zoning that they need to review. So, this gives us ability to separate those out and allow the Water Service Application to continue on its own with that basic site plan information that will allow the Water Issues Subcommittee and Council to understand what the project is and what it's doing for the evaluation of the Water Service Application. So, policy item number two deals with, with the, does, or, it deals with, I'm sorry here, one second. Administrative approval of, of water for non-residential development. And the changes to this policy was that the administrative approval threshold used to be one acre foot. The proposed change is to go to 1.5 acre feet. What's driving this is that there were a number of projects in the past that had to go through the Water Issues Subcommittee and Council Approval Process, pretty much solely based on their landscape requirements that were driven by code. So, if, if, for those projects where they're just meeting obligation from code, where the 1.5 threshold could get some, more of these projects to kind of go through administratively so that council and WIS can concentrate on the larger water service application projects. There is also a reference to, to code 9.1.1, which is applicable to this, to this, to this guideline. Guideline number three, this guideline deals with the Water Resource Management Model and how it, how it was utilized. There was an incorrect statement in there on how water, how that WORM model determined average water use for a parcel, so that was, that was changed to be corrected. We've added, or added the two-month turnaround for updating the Water Resource Management Model after getting with our IT department and looking at this process for the first time last year. It does take quite a bit of work, so it's probably a two-month threshold is probably adequate for that updating of the model. And then you'll see the third thing, there is an annual report on Water Resource Activity that would be provided to council. So, this would be a, this would be a report that'd be given to council based on WORM data and how it impacts the DNO portfolios, supply and demand, in an attempt to be have, give council more data so that water decisions could be data-driven. So, I'm going to come, I'm going to come to that a few times during this presentation.
Councilman Montoya, do you have another question?
No, my light should have gone off, sorry.
Councilmember Forworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, just two questions, one related to the last slide. You know, is it worth changing administrative approval to 1.5, or is it worth changing the administrative approval to what you said, which is commercial that's primarily driven by landscape code? And so, just a question, because this is a study session, that I just wasn't sure it was worth, my question originally was why? Why are you increasing it? When you explain the why, it's because of landscape code for businesses, it's like, can't we just say that versus a blanket upping of authority? So, that was just the first question. But the second question was, when I look at the point number three, the slide you're on, on the left, oops, next slide, sorry.
Slide down, or slide up?
Yeah, slide number, point number three.
Oh.
There we go. Okay, on the left, you talk about things that would go to, presented to Water Issues Subcommittee and Council and that. On the right, Water Issues Subcommittee is MIA. And so, that was what I was trying to understand is, are we trying to do away with Water Issues Subcommittee? Are we trying to change the scope? I wasn't quite sure what was behind that language.
The language pertaining to, you said MIA?
Yeah, on the left side of the page, it says, the WORM model shall be updated, you know, blah, blah, blah. Updated water use adjustments by project type shall be presented to the Water Issues Subcommittee and Council annually at its March meeting, et cetera. On the right, it starts talking about that the city will provide an annual assessment to council within two months. So, you've skipped and bypassed the Water Issues Subcommittee. I was wondering if that was deliberate or unintentional?
No, I, it wasn't intentional. It could, I don't, yeah, it probably would be addressed to the Water Issues Subcommittee and then addressed to council, so.
Well, I just have noticed that we're, sometimes in this space, people are very clear on following policy to the letter of the wording. And so, I wanted to make sure in a study session format, we reinsert the Water Issues Subcommittee, or, or we change the scope, I don't care which, but to bypass us from one column to the other. I just was wondering.
Okay, let us, let us think about that, what might be the best procedure, whether it would be within a study session like this with the full, with the full council, or if it would go first to a Water Issues Subcommittee. And we'll go ahead and address that between now and, and the voting session. Okay, item number four deals with, deals with the demand analysis that is required for, for Water Service Application. There was no changes to this within the 2024 policy. Item number five. So, item number five deals with cost-benefit analysis. So, what we did is we tried to, we tried to add some, some language in here to further define projects that would need a cost-benefit analysis. As you can see, the written language, large project that exceed the total water budget for any budget period, the requirement for cost-benefit analysis will be reserved for projects with, with many users or large industrial or commercial use. We're trying to give council the flexibility to, to require a cost-benefit analysis, but at the same time with the consideration that a cost-benefit analysis will only have useful information if the project has uniqueness that would contribute to it. So, for an example, a project that may have a large water use but contributes to economic growth through jobs or through a higher tax base, or maybe a project that might use the entire water budget for a biannual period but extensively contributes to workforce housing, things of those natures. So, we're just trying to provide some language that kind of steers that cost-benefit analysis towards those types of projects. There's a lot of yellow on this one, but it's, it's really a fairly simple, just kind of re-guiding of this, of this, of this item to try to make it simpler to understand when a water service, a water service agreement application will expire, and when a water service agreement will expire. So, basically, if a, if a project moves forward with a water service application agreement, and they haven't moved to the Water Issues Subcommittee within a year, then it will expire, that application will expire. After approval by council for a water service agreement application, if that project does not, is not actively moving through the permitting process, after a year, it will expire. And then, once a project has obtained a building permit, if that project has either been, and the words are, are right there, if they've been, if the project has voided, withdrawn, or expires before completion of construction, then that water service agreement will expire. So, hopefully, that more clearly spells out what the applicant needs to do in order to keep their water service application going. Item number seven.
Forworth.
Yep.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor. Brian, I want to go, I'm sorry, back again to slide five.
Okay.
Just the question that I had was, I totally understand the point of the recommendation, but the other one for me, and again, I don't know what I don't know, is not only a large project that exceeds the water budget for any budget period, but how about something like an unusual application, something that we don't have a common business that we can see the WORM and project what's, what's to be expected? And, and again, that comes from just potential, I hope, new innovative unusual businesses coming to our area.
So, when, when we have those type of businesses, that's when we require that the applicant provide a water demand analysis, and that helps us to understand what water use they're going to, that, that, that project will, will require. So, we kind of have the, we have the guidelines in, in there for that. The cost-benefit analysis is, once we get that and get that information, is whether we need to take it one step further, because we need to determine whether this project's benefits are, are, are in proportion with what the water that the city is going to have to supply to it to get it, to, to get it over here. And that's, that's, you know, where the cost-benefit analysis would take over at that point.
But the way this is written, if this came in at the end of a budget period, it would exceed. If it came in, this unusual business came in at the beginning of a budget period, it may not exceed. And therefore, the way this is written, council could not ask for a cost-benefit analysis on unusual business, all based upon when they hit in the budget period. So, I love the fact that the water demand analysis is always, is already required, but I just didn't want to lose an option if we're trying to learn something more with a cost-benefit analysis. So, that's, just again, in the spirit of a study session, I'm giving you input or reaction, take it as you may.
Okay, so you're reading, I'm, you're reading that, I believe, I don't that, I, I believe, I don't see anything that would preclude the Council from requiring a cost-benefit analysis by this guideline, but you seem, you seem to read something. If you could direct me to that, maybe I can make sure that the language is more clear. Or I can, we will definitely take a look at it to make sure. The intent wasn't to, based on the budget period, to have any determination of when a cost-benefit could come in?
Good, so we're aligned on the concept, we just got to get the words aligned.
Okay, okay, we'll work through that.
If I understand Councilwoman Furrorth's concerns, if we have a, let's say, a multifamily project that's going to need 16 acre feet, and they started at the beginning of the budget biannual allotment, that wouldn't exceed the 25 acre feet, so chances are it probably would be approved, although it would take over 50% of the amount available.
Okay.
So knowing that it, it might not be approved because of that high demand, then if it has to go to the Council for, for an approval to override the normal policy, then you would ask the applicant to put together a cost-benefit analysis so the Council could understand the value of potentially approving it if it went over the guidelines.
Yes.
And if they, maybe it was only nine acre feet, then it would get approved, but if it was in the last month of the biannual budget cycle, there may not be nine acre feet available to have an approval.
Right.
But it might be a really good project, so you might as well ask the applicant to prepare that. So if they do want to go, like the Palmer Development came in front of Council, and we went ahead and approved it because of the value of that multifamily development by the Pine Ridge Marketplace.
Right, so.
So am I correct in analyzing what your concerns are?
Exactly right, because, because of the way the current policy, 2024 policy, words are written.
Yeah.
Align to the concept. You and I and he now, I think, see it all the same way, we just got to get the words right.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the issues with the 22 or the 24 policy is that, you know, the budget, it, these are the constraints of the budget, and it, it can happen, if, if the project is so large it's going to take up the entire bud, the biannual budget at any point, then it, it has to go through an appeal process. But that appeal process can go through at any point in time. So even if that nine acre foot project came in and there was only five acre feet, it can still go through the appeal process and be heard through Council and then approved and move forward.
But this is about, we're talking about a cost-benefit analysis. I understand all those other options.
Okay.
Okay, so it's when do we have the right to ask for a cost-benefit analysis?
Yeah, so the city, there's, I don't think there's anything in the guideline that precludes Council from, or, or the city from acquiring a cost-benefit analysis at any point in time, regardless in the budgeting process. When we see a project and we look at it and say, this is a unique project, we're going to need a cost-benefit analysis for this. We want, you know, this is, this is, again, it's going to be, in, in our determination, it's going to be, it's going to be a significant project. It wouldn't be a project that uses 25 or 30 or 50 acre feet. It'd be, it'd be a larger project, something that is going to impact our portfolio in a significant way. So we need to, we need to define within this cost-benefit analysis and understand what we are approving here in terms of benefits to the community and water being given out.
Good, we're aligned on the intent. We just got to get the words on the 24 policy to line up with that intent.
Okay, sounds good.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I have a question on policy six.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're right there, okay. If you go down to the second yellowed-out paragraph there, if a project's building permit is voided, withdrawn, or expires before completion of the construction, that, I think, could potentially be a big problem. So you're telling me if somebody starts to build a multifamily apartment complex and all of a sudden time goes by for delayed material, whatever, we're going to take away their water allotment in the middle of their construction project? I'm going to propose that you change that. If a building, if a project's building permit is voided, withdrawn, or expires before construction begins, now, if, if they have a delay on beginning it and they, their policy or their, their application has run out, then we can take it away before they begin it. But if you're going to propose taking it away before they complete the project, that could potentially cause a lot of problems.
So the intent of the, of, of the wording was to ensure that people aren't sitting on water, that they're, they're not going through the Water Service Application process in order to obtain water, and then maybe sit on it for a few years to see if it becomes more valuable, or they can do something better with it. I understand what you're saying on, on this, and we can look into it. I, I believe that if a construction project run into the issues that you're talking about, but the intent is to continue that construction and move forward, that there's ways that they can keep their permit active, that they don't need to let it expire. If they're not looking at keeping it active, if they're looking at, at just putting the project aside, and I'm going to start it back up in a few years when there's a better situation, then what we want is, we want that, we want them to go over that water, that water service application again, because that needs to be evaluated when that project is being done, based on the portfolio and the information we have on water on that time.
No, I agree with you, but the assumption is the, the construction project will not have started, because I, I think what you're trying to do is a developer will come and buy a piece of property, he will have the plans drawn up for, you know, I'm just going to use this as an example, a multifamily. He will collect the water rights, and then he will go out and market the subject, the project. So what we don't want to do is allow that to happen, they can hang on to that if, if it takes two to three years to sell it. My problem is before the completion of the construction, so the assumption there is they've already started the project physically.
Okay.
So I, I think we need to rework that.
Okay, yeah, let us take, let us take a look at that, because I, I get your, I get your point. I get your point on what you're saying on that.
I mean, are you reading it the same way as I am? It can be withdrawn, or if expires before the completion of the construction. So there, that means to me that they're already in construction.
Right.
We're not going to take away their water rights with their, in the middle of the construction project. So I'm just proposing that you say expires before the construction project begins. You get that?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Brian, did you say there are 18 of these?
Yes.
22, well.
Well, there's 22, 18 in the revised policy, yeah.
Mayor?
Councilman Montoya.
I'd like to make a procedural suggestion here. We're at 2:53, people have been filing in for the voting session. I would suggest, given that the construction of this water policy took four meetings, I think revision of it probably is going to take more than the nine minutes we have left. So I would suggest maybe we continue this to a further study session going forward.
I certainly would support that postponement and rescheduling. I mean, I've sit, been involved in, I think, every single meeting of the Water Policy Review and Monitoring Committee, and it's taken a long time to get to this point. So being able to have the Council understand each one of these policies and what the potential impact could be, I don't want to rush through it. These are important, and clearly there's, the need to have as functional and efficient policy as we can, so let's not rush through it, let's reschedule, and we can go through the entire 22 policies with enough time to really digest it.
Sounds good. We'll try to take that opportunity too, to answer the questions that Council had today. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to adjourn this study session now. We'll take about a, you need 10 minutes? We'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll convene the voting session at 3:05.